Good evening and welcome to the 2023 Milton Speaks Candidates Forum. My name is Alex McGettrick and I will be tonight's moderator for the school committee forum. I'm joined by Mrs. Genevieve Santilli of the Milton Times and Mr. Daniel Steinberg and Mr. Tucker Corman of the Milton High School Debate Team. First, some housekeeping. Candidates were contacted through the town clerk's office as well as MATV for participation in these forums. Candidates were not provided the questions or subject matter before tonight's debate. Tonight's questions will be asked directly towards all candidates. No individual questions will be asked. Tonight's questions will be asked by members of our press panel. We also solicited questions from the public. If you don't hear your question being asked, it may be part of another question or a repeat question from another panel member. The format for tonight's forum. Each candidate will be allowed a 90-second opening statement. Candidates will then be asked questions by members of the panel. Each candidate will be allowed a 90-second response to each question. The order for the first question will be alphabetical by last name, with the order changing for each subsequent question. There will be a one-minute closing statement offered to each candidate for which the order will be chosen randomly. There will be no rebuttals. I will signal when you have 15 seconds remaining to allow you to wrap up your answer, and I ask that you finish your thoughts and bring your response to a close at that time. Please also reference the countdown clock on the TV screen in front of you. Tonight's forum will feature the candidates for school committee and planning board. Our school committee candidates are Mr. Mark Loring, Mr. Daniel O'Neil, Ms. Bao Chu, and Mr. Leroy Walker. Each candidate was asked to submit a brief bio, which I will now read. After their bio, the candidate will read their opening statement. We will now begin introducing our school committee candidates. First, Mr. Loring. Mark Loring is first and foremost a member of the Loring family, which includes his wife, Amanda Kay, and his three children, Cole, Lincoln, and Myers. Cole and Lincoln attend Cunningham Elementary and go Cougars, and Myers is in preschool. Professionally, Mark has over a decade of experience working in schools, including time as a teacher, school administrator, chief operating officer for a network of schools in Boston, and he received his master's degrees from the Harvard Graduate School of Education with a focus on educational policy and management. Welcome, Mr. Loring. You may now read your opening statement.
Thank you so much, Mr. McGettrick. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to speak. The work of Milton Public Schools is very personal to me. My wife and I first moved our family to Milton because we wanted our children to have access to an outstanding public education. The longer we've lived in Milton, also, the more we've noticed and begun to appreciate the volunteerism that really permeates our community. So many talented and wonderful people give of their time and expertise to our town in order to make it a better place. My expertise is in schools. It's what I've done my entire professional career, as a teacher, as a school leader, and now as the chief operating officer of a network of schools that serves over 2,200 kids. In my role as COO, I oversee a $50 million annual operating budget. I manage human capital and HR functions, as well as facility and capital improvement projects. Schools is what I know, and I'm hoping to leverage my expertise in service to the town that I call home. My kids are going to be in Milton Public Schools for the next 15 years, so as I say, this work is very personal to me. I believe we have many challenges in front of us as a community, and we need experienced educational leaders to be at front and center in order to address those challenges and ensure that we are achieving the goal that all of us have for our Milton students, which is an outstanding educational experience for every single kid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. Next, Mr. O'Neil. Dan O'Neil is a married father of three children in the Milton Public School system. Vivian, a freshman at the high school. Regina, a seventh grader at Pierce Middle School. And George, a fourth grader at Cunningham Elementary. Dan is an accountant by profession and is running on a platform of fiscal accountability, increased funding for special needs and STEM programs, as well as closing the achievement gaps for all students. Welcome, Mr. O'Neil. You may now read your opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. McGettrick, and thank you to the panel here for sponsoring this important forum tonight. My name is Dan O'Neil, and I'm running for one of the two open school committee seats this April 25th. I'm not an educator. I come from the world of finance and accounting. I worked for Massachusetts. I used to work for the Massachusetts Inspector General's Office, exposing fraud, waste, and abuse in the expenditures of local funds on a state and federal level. I will bring that perspective to the Milton schools because I believe that there is a lack of transparency in what is spent here at that school district. Specifically, just going over the budget, you know, it's approximately $58 to $62 million. All I see is line items in the budget. I don't see what specifically people, our administration, is spending their money on. I want to be able to be involved in the hiring of a new special ed teacher, director, and also her or his staff. My son, George, has autism, so my platform is getting the necessary funding for special needs students, as well as hammering home on funding math, science, and technology programs. I want to make Milton School District as competitive as it can be, and with your vote, I'm going to try to make that, I will make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Next, Ms. Chu. Bao is a mom of two children attending Cunningham and an educator with over 15 years of experience. She's running for school committee and town meeting member. Welcome, Ms. Chu. You may now read your opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. McGettrick, for the nice introduction. As he said, I'm a mother of two Cunningham students, a fourth grader, Hosen Chan, and a second grader, Hosa Chan. I'm going to share with you my perspective and my visions. First, my perspective. I'm a first-generation immigrant. I know how it feels like to be an outsider, but I work very hard. With four years of scholarship, I earned three degrees from UMass Amherst in linguistics, economics, and master degree in teaching Chinese as a second language. And I have been teaching for 16 years since then, from kindergarten up to graduate schools, from public to private schools. I'm a dedicated educator. Now, I'm going to share with you my, that leads into my visions. First is I'm in favor of the land swap and the new school. The overcrowding issue across the district is very pressing and very urgent. I see that with my own eyes every time I go into my kids' classroom to volunteer. We need to give the students and the teachers the ideal space to learn and to teach in order for them to achieve academic excellence. And second, I would advocate for early interventions and support for students with learning disabilities to ensure learning growth, to close learning gap, and increase graduation rate. And third, I would emphasize on global citizenship. Milton have done this a long time ago by emphasizing teaching of second language starting from first grade, and we should continue to offer more critical thinking courses to broaden our students' vision and perspective. I'm Bao for Milton. I'm asking for your vote on April 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Finally, Mr. Walker. Leroy and his wife, Casey, have lived in Milton for 40 years and have raised their two sons, Leroy III, or Trey, and James here. Trey and James both graduated from Milton High School. Leroy is the founder and owner of Walker Human Resources Consulting, LLC, an 11-year-old management and human resources consulting firm. Welcome, Mr. Walker. You may now read your opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. McGettrick, and the story of my life, it's Leroy, not Leroy. I'm running for school committee for a very specific reason, and that reason is that I feel a sense of urgency to once again serve the community that I love. And that sense of urgency derives quite directly from the fact that the underperformance that has resulted in the last three years is something that this community hasn't seen in decades. To be clear, in grades three through eight, four out of 10 students are below standard in reading and below standard in math. In one of our elementary schools, a full 50% of students are below standard in reading and in math. Our students with disabilities graduate at a rate that is 13 percentage points lower than the overall rate. For overall rate, it's about 95%. For our students with disabilities, it's 82%. These are matters and issues that I think we have to address, and I hope to be able to talk about that in much more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And now we'll begin the forum. The first question will be from Mr. Steinberg, and will be first from Mr. Loring.
Mr. Loring, what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing the school committee currently? What schools does it involve, and what are some possible solutions?
It's a great question. Thank you so much. I think the most pressing issue is addressing the learning loss that we have seen in our schools since the pandemic. You know, we know that the pandemic was unprecedented, and we know that the impact of that is still being felt to this day. I believe that we need to do everything we can to look for new ways to accelerate educational excellence for all of our students. There are too many students who are being left behind, who are not being supported. We have too many educational equity gaps throughout our district. And I think a piece that is directly connected to that issue of educational excellence is the overcrowding within the schools. It's very difficult for our teachers to be able to achieve the high expectations we have of them and our students with spaces where they have 28, 30 students in front of them. As a former teacher myself and somebody who works in schools every day, that is challenging to be confined to those types of spaces, to have to work in spaces that are less than ideal as you're trying to reach educational excellence. We need to respect our students more. We need to respect our teachers more. And I think by focusing on both the space and overcrowding issue, as well as the rigorous standards, and what we're doing to continue to push our students to academic excellence, I think those two things in collaboration will help us address some of the most pressing challenges in front of us as a school district.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. Next, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you for the question, Daniel. I believe that the most pressing issue that's facing the school system is the competitiveness and the learning loss that has occurred over the last several years here in Milton. There's been an increase in IEP students enrolled in that program. Over approximately 20% of all the students are enrolled in some form of IEP. We need to get the needed resources to those students. We need to have early intervention. We need math coaches. We need accelerated English language programs. We need to bring back the accelerated math program at the Pierce School. We need to focus on what is going to make a student competitive when they leave this high school. And in order to do so, the funding has to be spent on the right programs. The right hires have to be made. These students need the resources in order to not only graduate, but go on to college and compete in the job market. Of course, there's a need for additional space within all the schools themselves. The overcrowding has also lent itself to students not being able to get the individualized attention that they need. So I think that those two factors are what's most pressing here at the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Next, Ms. Chu.
I agree with what Mark has mentioned. The two pressing issue right now in our district is, number one is overcrowding. It is across all the school levels, elementary to middle to high school. If anyone have ever stepped into our classes or in our schools recently, you will see how crowded they are. We have classes inside the library. We have class on the side of the gym, where someone might be playing bouncy balls right next to, right next to the curtain. How are we going to be ensure our students have the ideal learning environment and for teachers to have the ideal learning, teaching environment to help our students succeed? So the overcrowding issue is the number one biggest issue. And the second one is, in order for our students to have excellence in academic, we need to provide them the support that they need, especially coming out from the pandemic. As a teacher, as an adult who going through this whole trauma in the past couple of years, it takes a lot of mental capacity to deal with the everyday changes, and not to mention what it would do to our students. So we need to provide the support for our students and for our teachers to do their jobs well and to, for them to learn in a great learning environment that they see the supports that we are pouring over to help them succeed. So I agree with Mark again. These are the two pressing issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. And finally, Mr. Walker.
So as I articulated, the most pressing issues we face are the MCAS underperformance in grades three through eight, the graduation rate for our students with disabilities, and the student mental health issues that have been raised by the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that was last spring. But we ought not to be either confused or distracted. The academic underperformance resulted from the unprecedented impacts on the education environment because of the pandemic. So it is not a problem that resulted from overcrowding. It's a problem that resulted from the learning loss that occurred during the pandemic. And the solutions, while I support the building of a new school and a land swap as well, the solutions I've already implemented. As a previous school committee member, I was successful in developing a strategy to close achievement gaps. We can do that again. We can do it in a year if we marshal the resources that we need. But I want to be clear, those are two separate issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question will be from Ms. Santilli, and will be first from Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil, how do the goals of diversity, equity, inclusion fit with those of academic excellence in your view?
Thank you, Ms. Santilli, for that question. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is personal to me, especially for my son, George, who has autism. He longs to belong, and with the special needs program that he's enrolled in, he's finding the skills and the necessary friends to make him feel belong, to feel a belonging. Diversity itself is paramount in terms of not only diversity of thought and also diversity of people's culture coming together for one common goal. That plays a huge role in what Milton is trying to accomplish here with diversity, equity, inclusion. Like I said, the necessary funding is not going to the right programs in order to foster that diversity of thought, to foster that diversity of inclusion and belonging. If we just refocus what we're trying to do to encourage the DEI and BE agenda, I think that we can be successful. We can bring Milton into a new competitive environment that's healthy. So thank you for that question.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Next, Ms. Chu.
Would you please repeat that question one more time?
How do the goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion fit with those of academic excellence in your view?
Okay. I'm an affinity group leader in my school. As someone who's came to this country as a first-generation immigrant, it feels very personal. And in order for a student to excel in a classroom, the educators need to provide the environment that is welcoming and supportive because without the emotional support, our student will not be able to actively engage in discussions and participate in class. So what I'm going to do with this piece of DEIB and inclusion is that I will meet with the superintendents, the principals, and the teachers in the schools who are doing the everyday work to hear about their concerns, to meet with parents to hear about their concerns in the monthly meetings, such as CPAC meetings, and also meet with students across the grade levels to hear about their challenges in school. I want to bring back all the findings into what I can bring to the school committees and to find some solutions to help find the collaboratively work together to provide program that can support both the educators, the parents, and the students in our school district. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Walker.
Well, the short answer is that they fit perfectly together. And what I do during the day is advise my clients that are some private companies, higher education institutions, on exactly that, how to implement and create effective DEI programs. But in the educational environment, so let's talk about Milton Public Schools. The most important thing we can do to advance diversity is to increase the diversity of the leadership team, of the teaching staff, and of the instructional aides. In terms of equity, we can make sure that people are paid equitably by gender, and that's contractual, I'm aware, but it also, in some cases, works out that instructional aides, for example, aren't paid anywhere near market rate, and they should be. With regard to students, it means meeting students where they are. And in terms of inclusion, it means affirming activities both at the staff level and at the student level. One of the things that we know about student mental health is that affirming activities are important for helping students have the most positive mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And last but not least, Mr. Loring.
I appreciate the question. DEI is really at the center of what it means to teach and to run a school. And I think that gets to, first, we need to define what is equity. And really, equity is about providing the resources necessary to meet individual student needs. Not every kid is the same, and therefore, not every kid should be receiving the exact same resources. And so we really, within DEI, connect that with differentiation of academic construction. And in both of those senses, we are trying to meet kids where they are and who they are. And that's how you breed a successful school, a successful culture within a classroom or within a community. DEI investment and resources are shown to be very effective at increasing a student's sense of belonging and connectedness to their school community. And without that, academic success and academic excellence, which is what we want for all of our kids, is not possible. The real question for school committee members is how we achieve the goals of DEI and of educational excellence within the scope of the limited funding available within Milton Public Schools. Financial resources are not unlimited, and we have to make intelligent choices about how we are spending our money. And that's something I do every day. Again, as I said before, I operate a $50 million budget. We look every day at what programs are we providing to certain students based upon the needs of those students and the needs at that school. It's not the same across the board. You really have to take a fine-tooth comb in each place to make sure you are maximizing the dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Loring.
Thank you.
The next question will be from Mr. Corman, and will be first from Ms. Chu.
How would you propose Milton Public Schools attempt to make up the loss of social and academic education because of COVID? Do you think there is something that the school committee could do?
Certainly, of course. So according to data, during the pandemic, when we go online learning, a lot of the students have a huge learning gap. And after the pandemic, the data have shown us in-person teaching have helped students to catch up with a lot of those, bridge a lot of those learning gaps. So what can we do is to continue to have in-person learning as we are doing right now, but also to give the students and the teachers the ideal learning environment they need in order to excel. So with the overcrowding classrooms that we have across the district, these are not ideal learning environments. And also, imagine if you're having, you're going to science class, but the classroom is not equipped with the science equipments that you need to do experiment. That is not going to help a student learn in, for science, right? So same thing for students who in the school district right now who having music classes on the stage of a cafeteria where all the noises are around them while they're trying to perform any kind of musical instruments. How is it possible for them to be able to engage and focus on what they're doing? So it all leads back into the overcrowding issue, and we need to provide the space and the resource our students and teachers need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Next, Mr. Walker.
Three most important things we can do. Commit to ensuring that every third grader is reading on third grade level by the time they leave third grade. That's important because third grade is the transition year where you go from learning to read to reading to learn. Every year thereafter, where you're behind in reading, you fall behind in your other subjects. The second thing we can do is commit to improving the graduation rate for students with disabilities. The third most important thing we can do is commit to addressing the issues raised in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey related to bullying, suicide ideation, possession of weapons in school. And if we do those things, not only will we have academic success, but we'll have a much more positive school environment.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Loring.
So the most important thing we can do is ensure we have exceptional educators in front of our kids. There's really no, and research has shown this, there's no greater effect on student academic outcomes than the teacher that is in front of them. Teacher quality is incredibly important. Luckily, with the Milton Public Schools, we have some fantastic educators. You know, we have educators that care deeply about their kids and challenge their kids. We need to keep those teachers. We need to do more to bring in more of those teachers to put in front of our kids. That's something I work on on a daily basis, managing human capital. How are we attracting and retaining the best possible educators? And once you have that expert team, that great team, really, then you can start moving into other areas of focus, such as, again, particular curriculums, particular interventions that are going to support the students that are in front of them because you have the talent and the resources and the community, the collaborative community that those types of educators bring to help address the challenges that are in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. And finally, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you. First and foremost, we should never go into a lockdown ever again. That lockdown devastated our students. It put them back in my family's situation. It put my son back years to a point where we had to go out and get additional resources and get teachers and specialists to help him make up that time. So that lesson should be never forgotten going forward. The children here that are being educated, they need to be able to get the necessary math, science, and technology programs. They need to be able to get the latest technology, get the latest software, get the latest computers. They need to be taught on those computers. You need to bring in outside experts, not just from the educational field. You just, you need to bring in the people that will engage in our students and make them, like my theme here is make them competitive once they leave the Milton Public School system. We also should bring in some senior citizens who are math teachers, too. We also should bring in some senior citizens who are math teachers too, as a volunteer basis. That's a program that we should be looking into starting and making sure that our whole community is educating our children here. So those are my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. The next question will be from Ms. Santilli, and it'll be first for Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker, what is your view on the land swap and eminent domain articles for town meeting?
I'm in support.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next will be Mr. Loring.
Yeah, I'll take up a little more time than Mr. Walker, but I also am in support of the land swap, and it's really for two primary reasons. Again, the issue of space, I believe, is an urgent one. It is affecting our students on a daily base. We already have students learning in hallways and stairwells, in gymnasiums, in makeshift classrooms within libraries. For me, as a parent and an educational leader, that's unacceptable conditions to put kids in, especially when we are pushing our students to achieve academic excellence. If we're going to expect that goal, we need to meet the moment by providing them the appropriate space in which to do it. I believe the land swap provides us the most direct means of addressing that swiftly. I also believe the land swap is the most fiscally responsible method to do as it relates to providing additional space. You know, we have many residents within our town who are on fixed incomes or who are low income, and the effects of tax overrides or of increasing taxes on properties, which is the primary way of raising revenue, is real. The effects on them are real and detrimental. So I think as a school committee, we need to be mindful of any time we are asking our fellow citizens to contribute. And as it relates to the land swap, this is an opportunity where we don't need to pay $8 million to secure some other parcel. We can move now with land the town already owns and save our taxpayers that burden while still moving forward swiftly to address the space constraints.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. Next, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you. The school building committee put a lot of time and effort into finding this location, and they should be thanked for their service. Am I in favor of this land swap? First, I'll answer the question, am I in favor of building a new school? Yes, I am, as long as we know how much we're going to pay for it and how we're going to fund it. This goes back to my opening statement where you have to have transparency and accountability on where our funds are going towards. Not only here, spending on salaries and non-discretionary measures, indiscretionary measures here in the school system, but building a school is going to cost upwards of 100, maybe $150 million. Do I want that school? Of course I do, but are we going to be fiscally responsible in paying for it? I also want one-on-one instructions. I want the town to have new fire stations. I want them to have a new Department of Public Works. But the way that this building committee has gone about doing it is, like I said, is commendable. But they're going to take conservation land by eminent domain. And once the government does that, especially when they're taking conservation land, that's a simply slope that it should be looked at extremely hard, because once you go down that path, you could be asking for trouble. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. And finally, Ms. Chu.
I'm 100% supportive of the land swap and the building of the new school. As I mentioned before, overcrowding is a very pressing issue across the district. And as Mr. O'Neil had mentioned, the school building committee has spent the past four years endless hours and research to find solution to this problem and finally come up with this one and only option out there right now. It's this 2.8 acres of land right next to the Milton High School that is owned by the town, but giving, to swap it with 60-plus acres of land that is also given back to the town as conservation land. If we do the map, 2.8 acres to 60-plus acres, I believe that's a great deal. And by going eminent book domain is to protect the town from being sued by people who have nothing else better to do. So it is a very pressing issue, and if we do not pass it right now, it is going to prolong the whole process. It's going to cost the town even more money to do more in-depth research, which is going to bring us back into this solution, this only, one and only option. And the building of construction is increasing every year, as we all know, so we cannot prolong this whole process. And in turn of knowing whether or not, how much it's going to cost, first is we need to know where the land is going to be, and then we have to go to the architect to get the building structures, pictures done, and then we will know how much it will cost. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. The next question will be from Mr. Steinberg, and it'll be first for Mr. Loring.
What do you think about the social emotional learning?
About social emotional learning in the school system?
Yeah, again, thank you. These are all great questions. You know, similar to my statement on D E I, right? I think social emotional learning is a foundational element of any strong educational system. Again, students cannot be successful within the classroom if they do not feel safe socially and emotionally supported by the community in which they are learning. You know, social emotional supports are extremely necessary, especially coming out of the pandemic and all the negative effects that came from the pandemic on so many of our students. I also believe social emotional learning can look different for many different students. So sometimes that's one-on-one sessions with school psychologists or counselors, sometimes it's small group sessions with counselors or social workers. Other times, that's increasing our investment in our extracurricular programs, right? Our arts, our music, our sports. Those are opportunities where students can find connection, find a sense of belonging, find their people, and really find opportunities to feel good and successful within the educational environment, which really boosts their social emotional, their social emotional state and allows them to be more able to achieve academically. And again, all these pieces, the D E and I and the social emotional, are partnered with that rigorous academic instruction to achieve our ultimate goal of outstanding and exceptional educational experience for every Milton student.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. Next, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you for the question. I believe that social emotional learning has merit, and it does have a place in the school system, but it shouldn't be the top priority. What should be the top priority is funding math, science, and technology program, making our kids competitive, using the scarce resources and investing them in useful skill sets that our children are going to be able to apply in the real world. The money that we're spending on social emotional learning, I believe, can go towards better programs, especially for the children that are in individual education plans, also for the special needs students. There is a social emotional learning component there that I believe has merit and should be fostered. But in terms of the high school children, students, young adults, I think that the priority has got to be doubling down on math, science, and technology. So thank you for that question.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Next, Ms. Chu.
As I mentioned before, social emotional learning support are the foundation for students to feel comfortable, to engage in learning, and engage in classroom discussions. The relationship between the teacher and the students are very fundamental in helping the student feel belong in the environment. As a teacher who have been teaching for 15 years, 16 years now, I have seen what a difference it makes to have smaller class size so that I know my student individually compared to when I have large size, class size, and I cannot be able to address my students in their individual levels. So they are all related, and when we talk about social emotional learning, it is agree with one marker, is connected with the D E I B, because diversity is not just talking about skin color, racial, ethnic differences. Diversity includes family structures, gender identity, sexual orientation, social academic class status, learning neurodiversity in learning, the different kinds of learning styles that people prefer. So diversity includes everybody, as is a big umbrella that includes everybody in there. So in order for everyone to excel, we need to build up that relationship between students and teacher before we can learn the academic standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. And last but not least, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. So social emotional learning is a critical part of the academic environment. And a little bit of context, I think that it's linked directly to student mental health, that students need to feel comfortable in the environment and, as a number of people said, affirmed in the environment in order to learn most effectively. But here's a little, a little bit of context from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, just quickly. Hispanic students reported the highest rate of depressive symptoms. Black or African-American students reported the highest rates of attempting suicide. 50% of sexual minority students reported depressive symptoms. 70% of sexual minority students reported anxiety in the last 12 months. So what I do in my day job is try to identify problems and also identify what the correct solutions are. So in this case, one of my proposals is that we create some onsite therapy services for students, because if students are in crisis, if they're thinking about attempting suicide, if they're depressed, then they can't be effective learners. So I think it's critical that we create some sort of component that addresses student mental health and provides that access to students who either may not afford it or may be less likely to avail themselves of it outside of school.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The next question will be from Ms. Santilli, and it'll be first for Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil, how should the school committee balance the need to provide quality education with the need to balance taxpayer burden?
Thanks for that question. I think I just touched upon it, not in my previous response, but the one about the land swap. There's only so many dollars out there that is available to a school building committee to build a school. You have a tax base, you have a proposition two and a half that is a law that caps the budget at two and a half percent every year. If the school budget itself is increasing six and a half percent a year, we're having difficulty funding the school budget as it stands alone, never mind trying to build a new school. And who's going to pay for the schools? Obviously, the taxpayers. We have a very small commercial tax base. It's all going to be placed upon the residents and the homeowners here in Milton to pay for the school. So the balance, what is the balance here? We don't even have an architectural rendings of what the building's going to look like. How big is it going to be? How much is it going to cost? When is it going to be available? Are we getting funding from the state school billing authority? Are we even on the waitlist? Do we have any measurables here that we can actually look to and forecast what this is going to cost each and every taxpayer? Being able to weigh this out amongst the entire community is, it's a very difficult decision that, you know, the school committee, well, first and foremost, the school building committee had. It's going to go before town meeting. The town meeting has to vote on it. It has to be, you know, passed by the town meeting before the school committee even can address hiring new teachers, you know, getting certain resources in place. Like I said, building the school itself, cost overruns. I come from a job where I've investigated school construction projects. I find a lot, I have found a lot of waste. People aren't held accountable in many instances here in building such a large structure like that.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Sorry.
That's okay.
Timer wasn't working.
That's, oh, it wasn't working.
Next up will be.
Thanks for giving me the extra time. I appreciate it.
Of course.
That's why we need to invest more in technology here. To get that timer to work.
This is a great question, but it is a town-wide question. So this is some, because we all know that Milton is heavily relying on residential tax. Over 90% of our town's tax revenue comes from residential. So in order to, as Ms. O'Neil said, how to fund the school building, again, the first step is we need to figure out where that land going to be, where that building is going to be, and what is the building structure is going to be like, and then we will know how much it will cost to build that school. And because this is a whole-town problem, I would actively seek out opportunity to collaborate with other committees in the town. And I would also encourage my colleague in the school committees to do the same if I do get elected. And together collaboratively across town, across different committees, we will able to find a solution to address the funding issue. And one thing that we can save on funding is investing in early interventions and providing services to our special, to our students who have learning disabilities, because this year alone, by keeping students within the district to receive educations, there's, we saved $202,000. So in the long run, we are going to save millions of dollars. So those are some funding that we can use on the school building.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Next, Mr. Walker.
So here's the answer, which benefits from six years of experience on the warrant committee, which is the town finance committee, and six years of experience on the school committee, nine years of experience on the town government study committee. We have a serious problem. The problem is that the town's budget suffers from what's called a structural deficit. The school budget is 49% of the total town budget. The school budget is growing at between 5 and 6%. That's the, what's called the rollover budget. So that's if we don't do anything different than we were doing the previous year, and we just roll that over, the cost increases between 5 and 6%. And I don't think, it's hard to do the arithmetic. There's not enough money to go around. Further, we're going to have to be much more disciplined about the decisions we're making with regard to how we're spending the money, because we're not going to be able to ask for an operational override every couple of years. And I predict that we will be asking for one next year, and I'm not sure it's going to pass. And what will happen then is that we'll have to make some even tougher decisions, including layoffs. So we're going to have to be a lot more disciplined about, one, how we plan to spend money, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions. Can't avoid it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And finally, Mr. Loring.
Thank you. You're really nailing it with these questions. They're very good. You know, I think that is, the question of how to achieve a quality education within the limited financial resources is core to what the school committee does. You know, it is the school committee's job to advocate for the educational resources necessary to meet our goal of an exemplary educational experience for all kids. At the same time, it's necessary for the school committee to do that within the context of the town in which it is serving. And obviously, my fellow candidates have laid out very clearly the context within Milton and some of the limitations we have within financing. You know, out of respect for our fellow residents, we have to always be making sure we are spending every dollar wisely, because those dollars really matter to many of our residents. And as a, as a parent of a kid within the schools and as an educator, I would love to double our budget for our schools. It would be fantastic. I know that's not realistic. We have to always be thinking of ways in which we can invest more strategically, and that's something I do every day. Again, as I said at the start, I operate a $50 million budget annually, and we have to make those hard decisions. There are some things we'd like to invest in that we don't have the money for, and we have to find ways to evaluate programs, see which ones are working, where we need to direct more resources, where things aren't working, and we can pull back resources, right? Where we need to increase staffing, where we can pull back staffing. That's something I do on a daily basis, and that's something we need to do within this town to be respectful of all of its residents and the resources they provide us.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. The next question will be for Mr. Corman, and it'll be first for Ms. Chu.
How do you plan to deal with overcrowding in the school system, not just on the macroscopic level, but also within schools themselves?
This is a great question. Thank you. So. Thank you. So, the first time I heard about the overcrowding issues is when I go into my kids' classrooms to volunteer for Mid-Artists and Read for Diversity and for Lunar New Year events. And as I mentioned before, they have classes inside the library on the stage of a cafeteria. And you mentioned it, it is a very pressing issue. So how are we going to address it? One, we need to pass the land swap and building of the new school as soon as possible, because that is going to save our town a lot of money in the long run. The longer we wait, the longer, the more expensive it's going to get to construct a new school. Two, I will work with the superintendents and the principals to find sound solutions to address this problem and think outside of the box and see which classrooms are underutilized. And perhaps we can use the spaces that is underutilized for maybe teacher's office or maybe to use as small group meetings so that we can utilize some of the space that we are, we have in the school to address some of the overcrowding issues we have. So, again, in order to address this problem, one, the long-term solution is to building the school, the new school. The short-term solution is to look at the space that we have and think how we can address it creatively. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Next, Mr. Walker.
So continuing our municipal finance discussion, this was a critical question that could have been addressed in the process we just went through where we tried to decide how to allocate the free cash that we had. We have, we had $4 million in free cash this year. Just quickly, that results when, in the previous fiscal year, departments turned back money they didn't spend or we underestimated new growth, which is the number of new homes that are going to come onto the tax rolls and so on. So, we had $4 million. And if you watch the, both of these meetings were recorded, if you watched the joint subcommittee meetings between the Select Board and Finance and School Committee Finance Subcommittee's, what they decided to do was not contribute as much to our reserves, that has implications. They decided to fund seven positions. Might have been a good idea, except that the overcrowding, which everyone agrees is an issue, would have been a perfect use of one-time money. So we could have said, we'll take some of this $4 million and figure out how to solve the overcrowding problem that we need to solve now, because even if, best-case scenario, the land swap passes and we're going to start construction, that's going to be in five years. So, we've got to solve this problem now, and that was a missed opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next, Mr. Loring.
Yeah, the overcrowding issue, as we've been discussing, is urgent. It's one we need to address both in the short term and in the long term. Again, within my work, I have experienced doing that. Within the city of Boston, I built a $45 million high school in eighteen months, on time and on budget. I also have managed over $100 million of capital improvement projects to add space, to address overcrowding issues, to add programming. And so this is something I know well. And because of that, I know there's no easy answers here. I think one of the challenges is that our school leaders and our facility staff have actually done such a great job over the past few years, thinking creatively about space and addressing the overcrowding within our spaces, that they masked the issue. But at this point, they've really pulled every thread they can pull. I believe I have some expertise to lend to go into the buildings, work collaboratively with our school leaders and our facility staff, and provide some of my expertise into places that maybe, as some of my other candidates suggested, they haven't looked at as in-depth. But in all likelihood, there are no easy solutions. There's not 1,200 square feet of extra space here and there that they haven't found. We might need to go into modulators. I have great concerns about that, both from a student safety perspective as well as a fiscal perspective, because modulators cost millions of dollars to establish and they're a short-term solution. So, there's no easy solution, but the only way forward is collaboratively and openly and try and lend my expertise to help solve the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. And finally, Mr. O'Neill.
When the schools were refurbished back in the, you know, early 2000s, mid-2000s, this problem should have been looked at and accounted for down the line. Unfortunately, for whatever reason at that time, there was no thought process on how to grow with your school. I would rather see the schools grow out or up rather than to construct a $150 million school that we don't even know where we're going to place it. So we can address the over, what is deemed to be, you know, the overcrowding in the school systems by rescheduling students' school days, working with each school and principal to find the rooms that are not being utilized in order to start getting kids into a different schedule in order to alleviate the overcrowding. I just want to point out the fact that in 2012, Milton had a student enrollment of approximately 3,900 children, students. Today, it's at 4,300. So we got a delta here of, you know, 350, 400 children here. If we can't put our minds together to find a short-term solution to this overcrowdiness, that's a lack of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. The final question will be from Ms. Santilli and will be first for Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker, how will you seek to encourage transparency in the Milton public schools?
That's a great question. I think that the most important thing we can do is to create constant dialogue. When I previously served on the school committee, as soon as we had a draft budget, we scheduled meetings with the various PTOs, and those meetings were open to anyone from the general public. They could come, ask questions, give feedback, and help us shape our priorities. I still think that's a good model, but it requires school committee members to be willing to engage in dialogue. So, it's not a model where you have citizens speak, where the person can come and make their comments and the school committee doesn't respond. The community forums, all of which I attended, were a useful step forward, but there as well, there was a presentation and then people commented. What I'm looking for, and what I think you mean by transparency, is when we provide detailed information about what we're doing and why we're doing it, and individuals are able to come and engage in a dialogue with us. So I think that at every step, whether it's the budget, whether it's curriculum decisions, whether it's policy decisions, whether it's social, emotional learning, whatever we think is important at the time, we've got to make sure that we make the information available and then give people the opportunity to engage in a dialogue with us.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And next, Mr. Loring.
I completely agree with Mr. Walker. Transparency is all about establishing systems of communication, right? Opportunities for people to receive information, to provide feedback, and continuing that cycle over and over again. It's also about making sure our members of our community, especially our parents, are feeling welcome into our schools and feel connected. I think some of the systems and things we've done within our schools, such as reading about diversity and the Meet the Artist, which I know myself and some other candidates who have kids in the school have done, are great ways of connecting members of the community and our parents with our schools. And I think that's really important, because that builds a common sense of trust and a common sense of belonging. And with any transparent and communication process, you really have to have that sense of trust. You also have to have a common goal. And I think that's the thing I love about education, is that everybody does have a common goal. We all, every member up here, and I believe every member out there, wants to create an exceptional educational experience for every single kid in this town. That's what we all want, and as long as we lead with that vision and lead with that message and make sure we listen, as a school committee, to what people are saying about how we are enacting that vision, I think that's what builds trust and that's what builds those systems of transparency to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. Next, Mr. O'Neill.
I come at this question a little bit different than my panelists here. I'm about transparency in finance and spending money. From what I've seen going through the budget, the school budget, it's only line items. We don't know expense by expense, what we're paying for, who are we paying, what vendors are we paying? And again, we're not measuring the outcome of what we're paying for. That leads to decisions not being made correctly in terms of funding certain programs, getting the necessary resources to the children that are on individual education plans, getting the funding towards special needs programs. That transparency, if I'm placed on this board, it's going to be first and foremost, one of my, one of the missions that I'm going to work towards, posting it online, what we are spending on. Transparency also, in terms of the programs, the parents just want honest truth to be told to them. They want to know how their child is doing. They want to be able to feel welcome, to be, to actually have their voices heard. I'll be that advocate for those parents. I'll be transparent in order for that trust to be built. So, thank you for that question.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And finally, Ms. Chu.
So, in order to make sure that we have transparency in the Milton public school, first thing is we need to centralize all the information. I think so far, we have been doing a great job with our school websites, our district website, that links to different schools. And our principals and superintendents and also classroom teachers have been emailing parents regularly, at least once a week, to update us on what is going on in the school district from the superintendent. And from the principals, like what's going on inside our school buildings. And from our teachers, what happened in our classrooms and what to expect in the future weeks. So I think so far, we have been having quite good transparencies from the school to the parents. So we should continue maintaining that kind of centralizing information. Second piece is, we need to collaborate. I will collaborate with the superintendents, the principals, and the teachers who have the boots on the ground to do the everyday job, to bring back to the school committee what are some of the concerns and how can we help to address that. And I will also proactively attend monthly and weekly parent meetings and PTO meetings to bring back the concerns from parents and be also available for the parents to contact me to hear about their challenge. So to bring everything together back to the school committee, we will be able to collaboratively solve any kind of challenge we face, and that is the transparency that I will help address.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. We will now hear the closing statements from our candidates who have been chosen at random. First will be Ms. Chu.
So as I mentioned before, I have a perspective and a vision. And my visions are, one, I'm in favor of the land swap and the new school, because we all know about the overcrowding issue. And we all know that if we continue to kick this can down the hall, we are not going to go into any other solutions, and it's going to cost our town more money. And as diligent taxpayers of this town, as everyone, who everyone are, we need to make sure that our tax money are going to the correct way. And building the new school is ensuring that our students and our teacher have the ideal learning environment, and it's going to make sure that our property values are staying high as well. The second point is, I will advocate for early interventions and support for students to ensure that they have learning growth, to close learning gap, and to increase graduation rate. This year alone, we saved $202,000 by keeping students inside the district to receive special educations. And third thing is to emphasize on global citizenship, to offer more diverse courses, to ensure students have the visions and the perspectives to be global citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Next will be Mr. Walker.
I'd like to close with two things. And for those individuals that watch the CPAC Forum and will watch this and the Eastern, East Milton Neighborhood Association, considered a three-night event, so this will make sense if you watch all three. I want to talk just quickly about a study that was done by the Brown Center on Education Policy at the Brookings. And one of the things that I want to do is reinstate or restore accelerated math classes at the middle school. This study, it was a national study, and it looked at school systems across the country. And here's the finding. States with a larger percentage of kids scoring three or better on AP tests had a larger percentage of kids in tracked classes four years earlier. I'll leave you with that. And one final thought, in 2012, the per pupil expenditure rate was $12,816. That was the same year that all of the Milton schools were rated Level One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next will be Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you to the candidates here. I think that I have a different perspective than my fellow candidates here, whereas I have a background in accounting and I conduct fraud audits for my living. So, I believe that I have the necessary strong leadership and the ability to be transparent in order for the school system to get on the right track to becoming, once again, a tier-one school system. In order to do that, we have to hold people accountable for the decisions that they make, for the programs that they fund. We have to have measurable standards in order to compare how our students are doing. I just wanted to be able to say thank you to the panel and hopefully I can get your vote on April 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And finally, Mr. Loring.
Thank you so much. Again, very grateful for being here and up here with all these fine candidates. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to run for school committee and the campaign process. Throughout this, I've been able to meet so many wonderful residents and neighbors and really connect much more deeply with the town I call home. I'm running for school committee because I believe deeply in service, and I believe that experience matters. My decade of experience in schools provides me the experience, I believe, to work collaboratively with other members of the school committee to address the challenges that are currently in front of us. You know, as our candidates have said and as our questions have asked, we have many challenges, and we need unique and experienced skill sets in order to address them. I believe we all want the same goal for our students, which is an exemplary educational experience. That's what I want for my son and my daughter. That's what I want for their peers, and that is why I'm running for school committee. So, I hope you will vote for me on April 25th, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loring. Thank you to all of our school committee candidates, and good luck on April 25th. Audience, please stay tuned while we set up for the planning board candidate. Audience, please stay tuned while we set up for the planning board candidate.
So, welcome back, if you're tuning in from earlier, and welcome if you're just tuning in now. We will now hear from our planning board candidate. All candidates were invited to participate, and three candidates have withdrawn from the election since. Although uncontested, one of the two remaining candidates wished to participate, Ms. Tugayis will be allowed to make an opening statement, and will answer two questions. Ms. Davis declined to participate. Cheryl and her husband George have lived in Milton for 25 years and raised their two children here. Cheryl received a Bachelor of Architecture from the University of Arizona, and a Master of Science in Architecture from Columbia University. She's a licensed architect with 30 years of experience. First elected to the planning board in 2015, she's the longest-serving member of the current board. Cheryl has chaired the Master Plan Implementation Committee since 2016, and has been a town meeting member from Precinct 9 for 11 years. Cheryl was a member of the Warrant Committee for four years prior to serving on the planning board. Welcome, Ms. Tugayis, and you are welcome to read your opening statement at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for hosting me tonight. It's a great opportunity to speak to the residents and to have them hear from me, in part why I'm running for reelection, and also what I think about the important work of the planning board. So, I have served for eight years, and I'm running for reelection because I enjoy what I do. I enjoy giving back to the community in which I live, and there's more work to do. In my time on the planning board, I've come to appreciate the diverse points of view of my fellow board members and residents who express their views to the board. I understand the importance of hearing all different viewpoints. I bring my skill set as an architect, my experience as a small business owner, to this work on the board. I always seek to achieve balanced and informed decisions, because these decisions are really important to the health and vitality of Milton. These are decisions that affect where businesses can be located, whether we meet our housing needs, and whether we take initiatives to protect our environment. I believe we can grow Milton's prosperity while also protecting its character. We can do this through design guidelines and new zoning for our business districts, by being proactive about achieving our housing needs, and by updating our rules and regulations to address the threats of climate change. We need to work together to ensure a Milton that works for all of us.
Thank you very much. Our first question will be from MHS debate team member, Mr. McGetrick.
Thank you. So, Ms. Tugayis, in a broad sense, what do you think are the most pressing zoning issues facing Milton today, and what do you think could be some potential consequences of failing to address them?
I mentioned one of the zoning issues is our business district. You heard from school committee candidates about how we have a low business tax rate, and part of that is because we have small business districts, but those districts also produce very little in terms of tax revenue. So, we can invest in those communities if we revise our zoning that allows for private investment, so that we can get better economic return out of those districts, but also more amenities for our residents. The other significant piece of zoning, I think, that everyone's familiar with, is the MBTA Communities Law. And that law is going to have significant, potential significant impacts for Milton. So, I think it's really important for us to do the work, to analyze what this law can mean for Milton, and what we can do to ensure that it's, that Milton is achieving the best outcome for itself.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Ms. Santelli of the Milton Times.
So, the new MBTA Communities Law will require the town to create a new significant multifamily zoning district near the Mattapan High Speed Line. How do you think the planning board should address it?
Well, the planning board is engaging with consultants to help us analyze this. So, one of the things I would say is, there's a lot of information in the guidelines that need to be understood. I've been educating myself about those guidelines, and one of the things I think that most people don't understand is that because Milton borders with Boston, and our trolley stations are along that border, that our district can be spread beyond the one-half mile radius of the trolley stations. What we're required is to have 50% of our land in our zone capacity in that area, but 50% can be located elsewhere. And then there's other things within that as well. We can look at what kind of balance we can get through an average density across the district and across the districts in town, so that while there's a requirement for a land area in its own capacity, there is opportunity to spread it out.
Thank you. Ms. Tugayis, you are now welcome to make a statement at this time.
A closing statement already. Well, you know, Milton has, I touched on a couple of things. I touched on the business districts, I touched on the MBTA communities. I think we also need to look at our housing needs. We have an affordability problem, and we have a number of units problem. So, the MBTA community act is one way to try and address those. But we've also seen outside resources come in and try to address those through 40B projects. I think Milton can start to address our housing needs more proactively, so that we're in better control of producing the housing that our residents need.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you to Ms. Carol and the Milton High School debate team for their excellently thought out questions and being with us tonight. And finally, thank you for the staff at the MATV, Tom Pillar, Ted Omo, Brendan Primo, Sean Doyle, Jason Flanagan, Michael Ulet, who are under the direction of Shane Brandenburg. I'd like to remind everyone that the annual town election is scheduled for April 25th. Tune into Comcast Channel 8 on Tuesday, April 25th, at 8:00 PM for live election results. Thank you again to all the candidates for participating tonight, and thank you to the viewers at home for watching. Have a pleasant evening.